So we get to live it again. Okay, good evening, everybody. Let's get the show on the road. Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session for May 14, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ask every -- oh, there's Rob. Ask everybody to mute your cell phones and other electronic devices, and I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Apitoff. Trustee Orsek. Trustee Handler.
Here.
Hereborn. Trustee Albenson. Trustee Dolman.
Here.
President Rents.
Here.
Okay. Item two this evening is public comment. This is the time of the evening when anybody who wishes to may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. So if you want to talk about the new IMEA contract, that's going to be a later public comment. But if you have anything else you wish to share with us, now's the time to do it. Wouldn't anybody like to speak? Come on up.
Oh, very good. Good evening. My name is John Root, and I live at 326 Woodland Avenue. You, like me, may have received a flyer in the mail from a group called WAVE. I visited the website WAVE referenced in their flyer, and neither the flyer nor on their website do they reveal who they are. The flyer states that WAVE has decided to pursue legal action against you, the village board. And I conclude from that that WAVE is the plaintiffs' group recently filed lawsuit Jackson versus Winnetka. WAVE claims that village is planning to pass more burdensome ordinances. WAVE does not state what these ordinances are. And I have seen nothing from you, our village board, on any pending major ordinances. Am I missing something? WAVE claims that the recently passed steep slope ordinance will reduce our usable property by 40%. However, as I understand, the steep slope ordinance will only impact lakefront owners planning on new construction in the steep slope zone. Existing structures are grandfathered for those owners. If you can't see Lake Michigan from your lot, then you are not affected. The steep slope ordinance was passed in February, and demand for Winnetka real estate continues to be high. When I walk the streets of our village, I see a few-for-sale signs, and when properties come on the market, I often see a sold sign within a week. If this is a hot market as caused by you, your village ordinances, then I ask you, our trustees, please pass more of them. WAVE claims that taxes will have to go up because of the ordinance. Plaintiff in Jackson versus Winnetka are seeking exorbitant monetary damages for what I believe is a frivolous lawsuit. These plaintiffs are trying to reach into the wallets of Winnetka residents with their lawsuit and bludgeon you, our trustees, with monetary damages. I encourage you to stand firm, and I thank you for the job you're doing for this community.
Thanks, John. Would anybody else like to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we'll move forward with our main course. Okay, item three is the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency, IMEA, contract renewal discussion. And IMEA has requested that the village extend their current power sales contract and capacity purchase agreement set to expire in 2035 in order to plan for the transition to a net-zero generation portfolio and to meet the future power needs. Tonight, staff and IMEA reps will present the new power sales contract and capacity purchase agreement for consideration. Brian's going to lead the conversation to start. Now, a couple of things. We're not voting on or making any decisions on anything. That's number one. I mean, this is just our first look at this contract, and it gives us a chance to hear what people have to say, ask questions, and begin our due diligence. But it's going to be a bit of a process. So this is just the first step in what should be a series of meetings that we will conduct about whether this contract is something we want to move forward with or not. So tonight, it really is just hearing what folks have to say. Any questions that come up? I'd ask you all to just jot them down as the presentation moves forward, because I'd rather have everybody present in total and then let us ask questions when they're all completed. And we'll go from there. So, Brian, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you. As you mentioned, I'm going to just -- very quick introduction of the topic. Again, this is to begin the dialogue of discussion about a contract extension with the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency. You're going to hear it referred to as IMEA. So IMEA is the entity that provides our bulk wholesale power. They're responsible to get to the power to our village substation. That's where our responsibility to deliver it to your homes and businesses begins. It was formed in 1984, and we were one of the charter members, probably one of the leading entities trying to organize IMEA. We entered into a full requirements contract in 1990. So they, again, provide all our power. And to give you kind of a context of what the budget is, in 2023, we spent $8.8 million for all the power for the village. That's an annual amount. The power sales and capacity purchase agreement is set to expire in September of 2035. And the term "capacity purchase agreement," that's the generation component of the contract. So we have two agreements. There's 19 members that have generation. So those 19 members have two agreements to look at. They have to look at the power sales and the capacity purchase agreement. And IMEA staff is going to walk us through that tonight. So they're asking us to consider a contract extension. It would go from basically October 1, 2035, going into May of 2055. That's so they can begin planning for the resources and to begin that transition to net zero by 2050. We have until May of 2025 to make a decision. The village has that time. So to your point, President Rents, you have an opportunity to do your due diligence on this. Joining us tonight is Stacy Wilson, Director of Government Affairs, Rakesh Kapakku, Vice President of Engineering and Energy Markets, and Troy Foder, Vice President and General Counsel. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Stacy to take the podium, and we'll transition to their slide deck, and we'll start.
Sure.
I'm a little bit shorter than Brian, so bear with me. Can you hear me fine? All right. Well, first of all, thank you so much for letting us present to you this evening. We're here to talk about who IMEA is, what we're currently doing, where we're going, and asking for your consideration, hopefully, to continue with us well into the future. So we appreciate this opportunity here today. First off, IMEA, as Brian kind of alluded to here, we've been around since 1984. And originally at that time, the munis in the state of Illinois were finding it very difficult to kind of go the road alone. And so they reached out to the legislature, lobbied the legislature, and received the authority to create a joint action agency. And they got this idea by really looking around the nation. It's a nationwide model of what munis do across multiple states is have these joint action agencies to work together. Winnetka was a founding member, and you've been receiving power from us since 1991. Winnetka has a direct voice in our power supply through its board seat. So we have 32 municipalities that are part of our joint action agency, and each municipality has a board member. The president, village president, establishes that person with the council approval, and this is the same for each of the cities. So Brian Keyes is our board member right now. And Winnetka has been very active in the agency over the years. Brian just recently was on our executive board, which meets every month, and our regular board meets every other month. He also is on our energy efficiency board. We're going to talk about that in a minute. And then just a variety of working groups over time that we established to develop the policies. And we really are board-driven. Everything we do is on behalf of the board. We serve at the village's pleasure. The agency provides expertise, resources, and options, but ultimately, the board makes those decisions. We are a unit of local government, so everything we do is the same as you. We're subject to the Open Meetings Act. We're subject to FOIA. Everything is in a very transparent manner. And the board works really well together, rarely ever having split votes, presenting issues multiple times before decisions are made in a public manner. So what's the benefit of joint action? Well, there are many, but primarily, joint action advantages really keep your costs down and increase efficiencies. Sharing those services amongst 32 other municipalities, you share risk and you share costs so that it can be done better and cheaper. We are always on call for your community. We are created by and formed for you. We only serve municipally-owned electric utilities. That's all we do, day in, day out, every day. And we're nonprofit. So you have your seat at the board. You are part of us, and then we are part of you altogether in a joint action manner. We're going to talk about the power supply here in a minute. But first, I want to touch on what other services we offer besides just power supply. And these are just, first of all, not all of them are listed on here, and I'm not going to explain every one of these in depth. But it's to give you an idea of the types of things that we do beyond just making sure the power arrives at your city gate or at your village gate. First of all, we do -- so NERC is a federal regulatory entity where there's cyber compliance requirements, and we keep on those and make sure that you're all compliant in that manner. We have an energy efficiency program that we offer incentives to mostly commercial and industrial customers, and your village has utilized a lot of those dollars over the years. So we run an energy efficiency program. We also have an incentive program for electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure. We do power supply scheduling. So in our offices, we have a 24/7 operations center. It has very complex modeling whereby we look at the weather, we look at the load, and we forecast how much we think power is going to be needed for every day and every five minutes. So we work in both the day-ahead energy markets as well as the real-time markets, which happens every five minutes. So we have 24/7 personnel ensuring that you get the most economical power supply every five minutes of the day. We negotiate transmission and subtransmission contracts. We're going to talk a little about transmission today. That's really -- transmission is kind of a piece that's costing more and more over time, and it's important to be sure that we stay engaged and negotiate the best that we can in those situations. And we've been actually helping your village recently on this with COMAD. We have a 24-hour member system that helps support emergency assistance for outages and emergencies. We represent you in the regional transmission organizations, which we're going to refer to tonight as RTOs. It's the energy business. There's an acronym for everything. But RTOs are becoming more and more important. And what they are, it's sort of -- I liken it to an air traffic controller. And the air traffic controller makes sure all the planes land on time and safely and direct them where they're supposed to go. The RTOs make sure that the power, they're really in charge of ensuring that all the generation resources are there online at the times it's needed as a grid to ensure that the power stays on all the time. And they're increasing in rules and regulations and requirements under the RTOs. And we engage in the stakeholder processes for that to ensure that your resources get the best benefit that they can and to ensure that you are meeting all the regulatory requirements that they impose. So definitely bring our expertise on that particular avenue. And then we also track all regulations and do some legal defense as necessary for your assets. So how do we do this? Well, we really have long-term resources, and that's why our current contract is through September 30 of 2035. Back in 1997, the state of Illinois deregulated. And at that time, AMRIN and COMAD, as of now, they no longer own resources. They don't have an obligation to serve the generation resources and the power to their customers. They truly are wires companies. They're transmission companies. And so munis really did not do that. We were not deregulated. And so we really are, us and the cooperatives, which are mostly downstate, are the only entities in the state have this long-term obligation to serve load. And that's why we own generation resources, whereby in Illinois, you don't hear that so much with COMAD and with AMRIN. And we are there for the long term. We plan ahead. We own resources. I'm going to talk about what ones we own here in a minute. And we do everything on kind of a long-term basis, really trying to bring you predictable, what we call boring rates, right? The best rates that we can without a lot of volatility, because that's what cities are looking for. They're looking for that predictability so they can budget and plan. And all things being equal, our debt's going to be paid off in 2035. And so we should have, once that debt's paid off, there should be a roughly 25% decrease at that time. And just as a whole, the agency's in great financial shape. As I mentioned, we have these long-term resources. We also have the management at a very low percentage of your rate. And then we are the highest financially rated power supplier in Illinois. And really, our agency is yours. You built it to where it is today, and you're going to have a voice into building it where we go in the future. And that's really what we're here for today to talk about. So what's important to IMEA is staff looks at and makes recommendations to our board. And I think what I could also say is also our board has told us is most important to them. It's really something that we view as a three-legged stool, and you need all three legs in order to stay up, or if one falls, they all fall. And so those three legs are affordability, reliability, and sustainability. We are a nonprofit, so everything that we do as far as money is earned or saved, all flows through to a lower rate for you and for your residents. So that's affordability. And our power supply costs are lower than they were 10 years ago. Reliability, job number one, making sure that power is flowing around the clock. It shows up at your city gate when you need it, at the time you need it, so that when your customers flip the light switch, the lights come on. And then we also have that 24/7 operations center to ensure that that is done and done well. And then sustainability, we are responsibly transitioning to the future, looking to ensure that we keep that affordability and reliability, but moving forward into the future in a financially fiscal manner. And again, you have a voice in that decision. So this next slide is really just a graph to sort of show that affordability. The blue part of the bar is the power cost, and that's what IMEA controls. That's the piece that we control. And that's our power supply cost. The red are transmission costs. And for lack of a better term, those are pass-through costs that you're going to pay whether you're with us or anyone. All customers, COMAD customers, everyone pays transmission costs. And that's to make sure the power gets to where it needs to be. And our rates to Winnetka have remained flat over the previous 10-year period, and they're projected to remain so going into the future. So to demonstrate that, you can see the black line and what the cost of power was in 2014. And we just took that straight across. And you can see that every year over the last 10 years, it's been below that, with the exception of 2021, when we were right at the same price. And of course, that was COVID, when power demand dropped dramatically. But even in those challenging times, we still kept a good, solid, steady, predictable rate. And you can see, that's the plan going forward. In contrast, the markets, particularly in the last few years, have been very volatile. And we've seen a lot of people who've been exposed to the market have had real price fluctuations in their power. And as municipality, that's difficult to plan for, and it's difficult to budget for. And we have been under budget consistently year over year. And so we feel like the proof is in the pudding in the model we put together. So what do we own right now? Well, we're really in all of the Bov type agency. As of now, we have solar. We have large and small scale. The large scale, we have coming on in June of 2025. That's down in southern Illinois. We have six smaller systems, around half a megawatt or a megawatt in our municipalities, and we're adding more. We have several more in the hopper on that. We have two major wind projects, going back as far as Lee DeKalb in 2009, and then Green River in 2019. We do have ownership percentages in two coal-fueled power plants. Prairie State, there's a 15% ownership down in Prairie State, which is in Washington County in southern Illinois. And then Tremble County is in Kentucky, and there's a 12% ownership of that particular plant. Two of our municipalities have run-of-the-river hydro facilities, Peru and Rock Falls, and we utilize the capacity from those hydro facilities. And then we also have contracted capacity and energy purchases to hedge during those really peak times. So it was really, really hot days or really cold days. And we've done capacity purchases and energy hedges with nuclear owner and solar farms, and then some on the directly off of the market as well to round things out. And then, of course, what you're most familiar with is the member generation capacity, and that's what you have here with your own member generation. So that's where we are. Where are we going? Well, the board decided to develop a working, breathing document, which is called our Sustainability Report. And so we formed a working group of board members, and they helped create this plan that we're going to talk about today, brought it to the board, presented it in two open meetings, sought some feedback, and then ultimately passed the sustainability plan by the board. And it's built upon, and there's much more to it than this, but I'm just going to hit the highlights. So there's five principles. The first principle is to provide affordable, reliable, and sustainable power, what I just talked about. But how are we going to do that? Well, we're going to target reductions in greenhouse gases and increase our renewable resources as we replace those current resources. And then we're also looking to add 130 megawatts of solar on a more immediate basis. And then we're looking towards new technology, because it's going to have to be new technology to get us fully to net zero in the future. And the most immediate technology we're looking at is battery storage and how to economically integrate that into our portfolio. The second principle is to design and facilitate energy conservation programs in support of the concept that the most sustainable watt, of course, is that watt not generated. So we already have an energy efficiency program. It's mostly set up for commercial and industrial customers, and then also government. I think your city has used some of those energy efficiency dollars, et cetera. So we're moving on and trying to expand that so that it's easier for towns to be able to have an energy efficiency program that helps their residential customers and hopefully to increase the funds that will go towards that program. The third principle is offering flexible programs to mitigate peak loads, to increase reliability, and better integrate clean energy potential. So again, this is back to those really peak times, those hot days, when every generator, basically in the states, needed to keep the grid going. And so if we can try to find ways to mitigate that, then you need less resources, and it just helps the entirety of the grid. And so we are currently pursuing a federal grant to try to develop more consumer-type programs to encourage them to maybe turn down the thermostat a couple degrees on those really hot days or not run their dishwasher during certain times and really kind of notify and interact with the public to work together to bring down those and to provide incentives to do so. So we're pursuing a federal grant. We're in the midst of that right now. We also have a fourth principle, which is to enable, accelerate, and really integrate electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure into our programs, ensuring that we're utilizing that charging times as the best times. And we're also in the midst of pursuing a federal grant there with an optimized, basically optimizing our control center so that we can provide incentives to folks to be able to charge at the best times so that there's less stress on the grid. And then that helps because you need less resources during that time as well. So, you know, so much new is coming on with the energy business, and it's really becoming interactive. And so we're trying to grasp all those pieces to get us to where we need to go in the future. And then, of course, the fifth principle is that we should walk the same walk. And so we maintain, that principle is to maintain and support a sustainable workplace. And to kind of sum up that sustainability plan, climate change is a critical issue for our customers, members, and the nation. This plan was created by and approved by our board, and it details the steps we're going to take into the future. We're not talking, the plan doesn't say how we're going to get exactly from here to 2050 every step of the way. But what the plan does is set out long-term goals with three- to five-year interim action plans. And then each year, we'll come back to the board, and we'll detail where we're at on those goals and what we've done, what's working, what might not be working. And then every three years, we'll seek stakeholder input, and we'll update the plan as a whole so that it's a living, breathing document going forward that provides input from each member municipality along the way. So the next slide here is a graphic from that sustainability plan, and I'm going to hand it over to Rakesh to take on this part. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. So this is the -- this slide is straight from our Sustainability Report that our board approved. Some of our immediate, near-term needs are adding 130 megawatts of solar, then replacing our Lee DeKalb resource that ends the contract ends in 2030, and then Green River Wind Farm, which contracts ends in 2035. And then there's a 45% reduction in Prairie State CO2 emission from 2035 to 38. That's part of the seizure. So in addition, as Stacy mentioned, the battery storage, we are in the midst of a study. We're trying to look at these new additional resources to help serve our needs. Why do we need now? As we, every utility in the country is going through a transition right now. As we look at our goals, both short-term and near-term needs, we really need to know what we need to procure, meaning how much load should we plan for, for our resource needs. So that is one important reason why we believe we need the contract so that we can plan for the load moving forward beyond 2035. It's impossible to plan if we don't know how much power to buy. Then the other reason is, as we look at these resource decisions, as we, most of these wind and solar developers are risk averse, meaning they really like to have the financing things match with the cash flow that they're going to receive through the PPAs. So as we look through these projects, we do have, we -- 2030 Lee DeKalb expires. We need to replace that. 2035, Green River, that is what we need to replace. Also, our sustainability plan has a goal of 130 megawatts of solar. 25 megawatts of that has already been procured, and the 5 megawatts is in distribution. We put in the small projects behind the distribution systems in our member towns. By extending the member contracts, as I said earlier, we could get better prices on these power purchase deal, because most of these suppliers are risk averse, pension funds, things like that. They really want to have the cash flow that matches with the investment horizon. So with only 11 years left on the contract, we really cannot enter into those long-term contracts necessarily. So again, this graph basically illustrates. I would equate it to, you answered, somebody building a house to renting. So you'd probably get a better deal if you're renting over 20 years versus a 10-year. And depending on the investors, there might not be enough who are even willing to offer you a 10-year project. So this is something that we are having real difficulty as we transition, especially with how the contract is structured. Again, these are just market prices that we were working on our recent deal. This is just the price difference. So really, what the suppliers are trying to do is they need to recover all of that investment over 10-year horizon, even though the value of the asset is over 20 years. Again, the slide, the graph also shows that in 2035, our bonds are paid off. So that's the 25% reduction. Basically, we don't have bond obligation anymore beyond 2035. With that, I would introduce Troy for the contract details.
Is this tall enough? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I'm Troy Foder. I'm the General Counsel. I've been the General Counsel since 1998. And before that, I worked for the former General Counsel. I started in '91, which was about five minutes after you guys signed the contract in 1990 and about five minutes before you actually started taking power from IMEA. So I've been around a little while. I've been playing with this contract for a little while. My first slide here talks about how we worked together on what to do about the next contract for IMEA. The statute says we can do contracts for 50 years. This contract started in 1990, so it's right at 45. We can't actually do a 10-year extension like we did the last time or a 20-year extension. You guys had a shorter term to begin with, so yours is a shorter extension or a longer extension. But we can't do an extension. We have to do brand-new contracts. So we put together a working group. It was a working group made up of our board members. There were six board members, plus myself and the IMEA CEO. We hammered through the contract and looked at whether we would change this, change that, change something else, change the form, keep it the same. Basically, we made a decision to keep it mostly the same. I'll preview all the rest of my slides and just say it's basically the same. I'm going to tell you in a minute what the differences are, but. So what did we do after that? The working group met six, eight, 12 times over the last year. We put together the final document. We presented it to the IMEA board in an open, public meeting. In December, we had, we invited comments from the board members, and in fact, did get comments from board members and suggested changes, and we made some of those changes. We conducted a webinar for legal review and training where we invited your city attorney, I think someone from your office, Peter, attended, and I think Brian attended. I think there were at least 60 people on that call. So we did that training. We got more comments and questions and suggested changes from some of the attorneys that had been on that call. We made all those changes. We put it into the final document, and the IMEA board approved it unanimously in February. We put it on the street March 1st, and between March 1st and April 30th, 10 members of IMEA had signed it and had gone back to the IMEA board for us to accept those signatures. So 10 people have already signed and in the boat. We have four more that are signed, sitting on the desk, waiting for our next board meeting in June. So the slide says, we're your agency, you are us, we are you. I think that should be obvious by now. You're one of the members that started us. So if I can move on, like I said, the contract form, it's the same form. The rates and charges, it works the same way. There's some value-added services, which Stacy showed you on her slides. There's just the fewest exception to that postage stamp rate where everybody pays the same, but basically, there's a demand charge and there's an energy charge. So if you have a better load factor, your average cost is lower. And I think, I don't remember for sure, Brian, but I think you guys' average cost is fairly low as far as agency members go.
Correct.
Brian told you that the contract term is 20 years, starts, did I get too far away? Can you not hear me? Contract is 20 years, starts October 1st, 2035, at the end of the existing contract. We looked at whether we could end the existing contracts now and start the new ones now and do them for 30 years. But with, we, at one point in time, I think we had $1.3 billion in bonds outstanding. Right now, I think it's around $750 million. It's a little complicated to defees bonds, and it didn't make sense to end the contracts now. So that's why we're keeping the existing contracts for their remaining life of 11 years. And as Rakesh explained, we're starting in 2035, going through 2055, which gives us 20 years. That allows us to work with developers who want to build these new renewable projects and give them time to finance their projects, and so that we don't have to try and find a vendor willing to sell us a shorter-term contract and charge us double. Moving on. Okay, what's different? There are a few differences, obviously. It's been 34 years since we started serving you, 33 years since we started serving you under this contract. Back then, they didn't have things called RTOs. And when the RTOs were first created, they really were thought of as controlling the wires and controlling discriminatory issues about the wires. But what they really turned into is protecting the reliability of the wires, making sure there's power flowing through the wires. And the way that they decided to do that was to start an energy market and a capacity market to control how the generators that connect to the wires are dispatched so that we have a constant, continuous flow of electrons flowing across the grid, so the grid doesn't fall down and the lights don't go out. So the RTOs essentially, these days, do all that stuff, and they've got tariffs that are thousands and thousands of pages that, that we have to read and understand and work within those rules. And there are stakeholder meetings every month where they propose new changes to those tariffs, and they make a FERC filing at least once a month, sometimes multiple filings a month. Okay? So we've updated the contracts to fit within all of those RTO rules. So there's a little change here and a little change there. Basically, most of the changes are for the RTO rules. The change here that's on this slide is the member-directed resource option, which is something new that we've created. When we did those contracts in 1990, we opened up an option similar to this for, for members to pursue ownership of hydroelectric facilities. Two of the members back then did that, and those two, those two members have their hydros grandfathered going forward. What this is, this is similar. This is a member-directed resource. It allows for locally-driven renewable resources. As Stacy showed you on the charts, IMEA is going to do renewable. We are going to do solar. We are going to do wind. We're going to replace the ones that are expiring. But if your village wants to do more, we wanted to give you that option. Right now, the option starts at 10% of your peak demand based on nameplate. That's probably a pretty good size for you to start at. Rakesh and I do lots of work negotiating with these, these developers on power supply contracts, and your first one at that, that amount would probably about, be about as much as you'd want to handle for your first one. But if you get through that one, and you need to go higher, and you're the only one that's there and needing to go higher, we would probably entertain a waiver. If you're doing it, and two, or three, or 10, or 12 others are doing it, we may find that we need to take that 10% and move it up to 15, or we may need to move it up to 20. And that's the beauty of the IMEA structure. This contract has the core principles that we won't deviate from, but everything else is decided by the board of directors, and you have a vote on that board of directors. Next page. Okay, I haven't talked about the capacity purchase agreement. This slide talks about capacity credits, which is what IMEA pays you to have your power plant in town. Basically, we, you dedicate your power plant to us. We bid it into the PJM, which is, which is the RTO that controls your part of the world. We bid it into the PJM market. PJM tells us when to run it, or we decide to run it if there's a benefit to the system from running it. What we pay you is, we pay you, actually, your steam units get paid $4. This slide says 320. The 320 is broken up into a $2 base component and a $1.20 production component. That's what we pay you for your two diesel generators, and that's what we pay everybody else, because nobody else has a steam unit. Your steam unit actually gets a $2 production component, so it's a $4 that you get paid for your steam right now. $4 a kilowatt a month. I will tell you, if you look at the chart on the right, those numbers are in dollars per megawatt day. That's how the RTOs communicate these days. The old $3.20 a kilowatt a month is how the old days used to communicate this stuff. Basically, that 320 is about $100 a megawatt a day. So you see that green line going across there, the dotted line? That's what we've paid. In this new contract, we're going to agree to make that the floor. We won't pay less than that. The board has the ability to pay more than that if the market conditions are such that it's justified to pay more. And you can see that the prices are all over the place. The year that, the year that we took as the beginning of the snapshot, 1516, they were actually pretty close. MISO was at, was at $150 a megawatt a day. PJM was $136 a megawatt a day. You see that red line in there? That's when PJM changed the way they modeled COMED, and for a while, the COMED zone cleared at a much higher price. It got all the way up to $215 a megawatt a day. And then it stayed up there for a while, and for the last two years, and there's another auction coming up in July, for the last two years, the PJM rest of system and the PJM COMED have cleared at the same number. So again, that's just a snapshot to basically show you, there's going to be discussion about whether we pay more going forward, but we've established 320 as the floor in this contract. What do those numbers mean to you? It's about $1 million a year that Winnetka has been getting for the power plant that you own in town. And I noticed in, in Brian's memo that that's $46.2 million since 1991 that IMEA has paid you. Obviously, you've had generators to support and staff to support, so it's not like it's free money, but it's money. And the, and the generators have been there for you, for your own reliability needs, in addition to us using them for the grid and for the rest of the IMEA membership. So it's been a win-win for you and us, we think. All right, last page. I'm going to wrap it up. Why IMEA? We supply low-cost, reliable, and sustainable power. We offer value-added services tailored-made for your municipal electric system. You have a direct voice in our decision-making. We share your long-term obligations to serve. We are nonprofit. We are focused on serving you, not Wall Street. And to go back to the other slide, you know us. We've been serving you for 33 years, and you helped form us 40 years ago. You are us. We are you. Let's extend into the future the good results that we've achieved together. That's the end of our report. We would be happy to take questions. I'm going to sit back down.
Okay, guys. Any questions, comments, thoughts? See if we can put them through their paces a little here.
Yeah, I do, too. No, no, you go ahead, please.
No, no, you go ahead.
Couple things. I just, it's very topical, because I sat, I was chairing the Kellogg Global Corporate Governance Conference today, and we had leaders in sustainability, like Jeff Avin, who, global leaders. And I guess I'm looking at, how are we, how are you forecasting the power needs that may be coming? Because the way I'm understanding it, there are such, you know, with AI coming and data, how they're doing this, that there are going to be such incredible power needs on the grid that I'm, I'm just curious what you're expecting. Because if, isn't it going to be through solar? I mean, it's great, don't get me wrong. Love it, solar and wind, and there's going to be just massive needs that, I mean, you're already having brownouts in Texas right now, not even in the summer, and with what Austin is drawing from a standpoint of power and grid needs. So I'm just curious, I know, I think Wisconsin just won a contract for Microsoft, which is going to just be massive power grid needs. So I'm just curious, how are we forecasting that so we don't get caught short?
Sure. Part of that is, at least on our towns, we try to make sure what our economic development projects are and things like that. We try to forecast some of that. But you're right, on the, on the grid scale, there's a lot of data centers that are coming in. We are doing it at the same time when a significant resource mix is undergoing significant transition. That's why we need, that's why we need planning much ahead in advance as we look through the resource, resource mix changes and the RTO rules evolving, round reliability and things like that. That's why it's important that we continue to have these resources well-planned in advance before you transition out.
That's, I just, I'm just curious how you're planning that, because right now, we also had cyber, the heads for cyber and AI for the White House and Homeland Security. It's great, but I guess they're looking at, just, it's great to have the carbon neutralization, but they're looking at, how is this going to be sustainable? And I guess that's my, my question to you. It's, I'm just trying to, it's coming, and it's going to come in a big way. I'm just curious, how are we going to, for this village, well, for the state, but for this village, to really protect ourselves from that?
So if it comes to the grid, obviously PJM will take care of it. If it comes to the grid that you're connected to, PJM is going to have the responsibility to plan for that. PJM is going to put that into their capacity markets. PJM is going to put that into their energy markets. So what we can control, we can't control what PJM does, okay? What we can control is your costs. And so one of the, one of the other new things in this contract that I didn't put into the slides, because I just didn't think it would make a lot of sense, but we've actually looked at some of this because we have had some of these larger data centers that wanted to come into some of our towns. And if you're trying to put 100-megawatt data center in a town whose peak right now is 20,
Correct.
it doesn't make sense for the rest of the membership. And so we put in a new concept. I told you there were some exceptions to that postage stamp rate. Well, one of the exceptions is our new cost causer principle. And if yours, if your village wants to bring that data center in, and if it's going to cause a risk to the rest of the membership, we would ask you to pay for it. Now, there's a, there's a definition in there. Peter, you've probably seen it. I know Brian's seen it. Again, that's how we're trying to protect our members from this kind of thing happening. I know that doesn't answer your question about where the electron's going to come from.
Right. I mean, got to come from somewhere, and if there's some, if somebody's using it, I'm not sure if they're going to go to the highest bidder. I mean, how are you going to start rationing where the energy's going, where it's coming from? I mean, can we be caught short, is my point.
As much as I fight with PJM all the time, PJM does a really good job of managing that stuff, and so I have to trust that they're going to do a good job of managing it. I just have to try to make sure that you don't pay for it.
Well, I think we're all going to pay for it, but yeah.
But, but you don't pay a disproportionate share, or you don't pay some, you don't pay what somebody else should be paying for it. That's, that's what we can control. So I don't know if that's helpful, but.
I mean, to be honest, we're well-positioned with the resources that we currently have, and that we do have some baseload at this time to, to ensure that as we transition, that we're doing in a fashion that makes sense without getting caught flat, without any resources at all.
And Brian, I just, the reason I'm saying it is because, as we look at our own needs, if truly this is coming away, and all the experts are saying it's, because it's, it's happening in certain parts of the country right now.
Texas isn't on the grid. That's part of the problem.
They're not on the PJM grid.
That's part of their problem, is that they're isolated. Correct.
Right? Isn't that part of the problem in Texas?
Yeah. Also, Texas doesn't have what is called a capacity market. Basically, PJM and MISO, both grids have, it's basically still on the ground. These capacity markets, they try to procure up to your peak load, but you're absolutely right, especially with some of the data centers that we are forecasting.
It's, it's, it's incomprehensible what they're going to be using, especially with the AI, and it's coming.
Yeah. And what, and the best way to protect ourselves is to make sure we have our own needs covered, because if you don't, you're ending up buying in the market with significantly high expensive power. So the best we can do is to make sure we protect our, our needs, and that's what we have been trying to do. And 100 megawatts of solar, when we, 130 megawatts of solar, when we looked at our portfolio, it sounds like a pretty good match. To be honest, I think IMEA, with its baseload nature of power needs, is well-positioned to handle some of the scenarios that, that we are probably likely going to foresee.
Okay. I don't want to hog it. So, or if you else chime in, please.
All right. Well, I have a couple of questions. Some of these are in the category of stupid questions. So just for baseline understanding, are there any other municipalities that are locally-owned, have locally-owned and controlled power systems that are not part of IMEA? I mean, it just seems like in this world of, sorry, it's really loud, in this world of COMED versus the universe, you've got COMED, you know, you've got Wilmette, right, who gets their power directly from COMED. We have the Winnetka Model and the IMEA. What's, is there a third rail? Kind of what's the, what does the universe look like in Illinois?
Well, with regards to municipally-owned electric utilities in Illinois, there's 42, 32 of which are part of IMEA. There's a couple of very, very teeny ones down south that are sort of near a current, like, generating facility, and that, so that they just directly buy right off of a coal plant down there, essentially.
Okay.
Up north, there's what's called Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency, NMPA. There's, it's, it's different from IMEA because it is a, it's a project-based joint action agency, and the only project they have right now is Prairie State.
Okay.
And there's three municipalities on that. That's Rochelle, Batavia, and Geneva.
Okay.
So that's kind of the breadth. CWP is in, thank you, a very obvious one I should have mentioned. CWP is City Water, Light &amp; Power. It's in Springfield, Illinois, and it is, it has its own resources. So it actually owns a coal-fired plant as well as a couple of natural gas units, and then also purchases from the market. So they, they run their own, and they have a large operation with a lot of employees and whatnot to do that.
Okay. And the reason why I was asking that foundational question is that, is their ability to expand the membership into IMEA? Obviously, you could merge with some of these other entities, I suppose, or is there the ability to offset some of the risks by growing the base of IMEA?
Yeah, I mean, the contract is structured as such that we can bring in other municipalities if appropriate, and if the time comes forward.
In, in 1990, there were only 24 of the municipals in Illinois that signed those contracts in 1990. Since then, we've added eight full-re requirements purchasing members, including Naperville, St. Charles, Chatham.
Yeah, Chatham.
So the answer is yes, historically, we've done that. And I will tell you that we did have, our membership had actually grown. We had non-purchasing members for a while. We had, at one point in time, maybe 38, 39 of the 42 that had joined IMEA. But again, three of them formed NMPA. Genesee has always been kind of out there by themselves. Some of them are really little bitty. Some of them are connected to co-op, so it made more sense for them to stay where they were. And when they decided they weren't going to buy from us, we said, kindly, please withdraw. And when they decided they weren't going to buy from us, we said kindly, please withdraw from membership. And right now we have 32 members and all 32 members are purchasing. In the future, could I see Newton signing up with IMEA when that Newton coal plant shuts down in 2027? Yeah, I see that's a possibility.
Okay.
Do you think, do I think we're going to get all 24? I'd like to believe that because I'd like to bring the NMPA guys home because they used to be good non purchasing members of IMEA. There for a while, we actually did sell some short term power to Batavia. So again, we, we look at this all the time. My crystal ball tells me right now it's not going to happen in the next five years. It might happen beyond that.
Okay.
The, the others are part of, we also run the association, which is an advocacy arm. So we have good relations with all of the municipal owned electric utilities.
Let's see. Okay. One of the things you talked about was that the, there was a significant, I guess, advantage or there will be when the debt came off. Do you expect new debt to finance going to carbon neutral by 2050?
Well, I, I think that's a very good question. We've actually been asked that a lot over time. So as of now, no, we don't anticipate new debt unless the advantage of owning directly our own solar and wind farms appears to be a better path. Right now, we did advocate at the federal level to have the opportunity for direct ownership. And that is an opportunity in the new federal, the, the, the large capital bill that passed.
Infrastructure bill.
Inflation Reduction Act. But we, some of the rules that they've structured thus far are not necessarily clean or workable, but it's something we're going to continue to work on. So now, no, but possibly in the future. But if so, that's a, we, you know, we take it to the board and the board has that decision.
Okay. And then my last question is, because I think you did a great job on your presentation kind of explaining why, you know, why we're talking about a contract that would begin in 2035 and not going through, you know, just signing a new contract today. But let's just say worst case scenario, we don't continue. And what would it look like for a Winneka resident, day one, 2036? After the current contract, 2035 expires?
So we would have to plot an alternative path and it would take literally years to plan because they're already, but you've seen what they're talking about.
Right.
So starting on the spectrum of extremes, we, this would be your opportunity if you wanted to go to ComEd. So if we wanted to sell the electric system, have ComEd services, get our power through ComEd, the Illinois Power Agency, that'd be one extreme. Two is we could look at adding staff and go it alone, which is from a cost structure, not going to be palatable. But if you wanted to go it alone, so one of my peers said that he's comfortably thinking it has cost him 24, he'd have to add 24 employees to do around the clock. Power supply, market settlements, the transactions, probably need some additional legal assistance from Elrod Friedman that they don't have in-house right now. So then, so then, and the last step would be is there'd be a power supplier that we could enter, go negotiate and enter into a contract. And they would prob, they would have products from different power plants that we would negotiate some type of service arrangement. The, the piece about that is you're only getting the power. And what goes really unnoticed to most people is those ancillary services that she mentioned. So these two individuals were on a conference call, probably three conference calls with ComEd, helping us challenge our wholesale delivery costs.
Right.
We're not going to get that kind of support from a power marketer. So those are your, kind of your extremes.
Yeah. And so nobody has a crystal ball of what 2036 looks like. And it's really probably 2030, you know, because you're planning for the future in a non-IMEA world, which I'm not, I don't want to cause you guys to be nervous. I'm not, we're not talking about that. But it's most likely that the cost of power to a Winneka resident will be higher.
I think in the scenarios that, so right now, we're definitely competitive with ComEd. Plus you got direct local control.
Right.
Including things like undergrounding and directing the line crews for storm restoration. I don't see those, the scenarios as we know them now being less cost effective than spreading the costs among 32 members on a load share basis. I just, I don't see it.
And we have the ability of locking into these commitments that you're going to go out to and make for the next 20 years to try to lock in capacity. So it's not subject to a data center.
They're trying to, well, there's a couple of moving pieces. So they're trying to plan for that. They've got to renew existing contracts before 2035. But they're also tasked with, from the board, to add renewables. They have to plan for the partial closure of Prairie State.
Right.
And so they've got a lot of moving pieces. So they need to know who's there to make that transition. From the way I look at it is you have a direct, you're a one of 32. So you're basically sending someone down there to whether it's vote on or direct staff and work with your peer group. And in, and in the case of the agency, pretty much aligned as Troy mentioned in his comments. You know, we have, there's a lot of healthy discussion. I probably led more healthy discussion, most is what he's politely saying. But I think again, you know, you're looking at, you have a seat, literally a seat at the table. If you, so, and you have kind of control of where you're headed.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah. In the scenario where, where we just discussed where you answered the shortage of power, your prices is something it's way out of control as well. So that is something that is a real value with that long-term planning.
I go ahead here, Chris? And maybe, and my questions are just kind of in order of the presentation. They're not priority based. Sort of following up maybe on Trustee Delman's question. The, the statement that the rates are projected to decrease by 25% when the bonds mature. I'm not quite sure I understand that in the context of other costs that IMEA is going to be absorbing and so on. What exactly are you saying there? We're, we're not going to see a 25% reduction in our electric power rates. I mean, I just.
Well, I report to the IMEA board annually on the transmission costs. And Ameren's transmission costs have gone up 20% each year for at least the last five. Commonwealth Edison, sometimes they go up 12, sometimes they go down three. This most recent report that I looked at, they went down three. Next year they'll go up eight. With, with Exelon and Constellation separating and not being the same company and not, not being under the same parent anymore. What, what Rakesh and I anticipate from basically this, the way these companies behave and the negotiations that we've had with them over the many years, we expect that, that Exelon will start doing the same, that Commonwealth Edison will start doing the same things that Ameren's doing and that you'll see more of a consistent 10, 12, maybe 20%. So no, I can't tell you that your average cost is going to go down.
Okay. But that's what's.
What I can tell you is your cost of debt is going to go away completely. And for a while, we're not going to have to replace that with anything, for a little while. So that first 100 megawatts of solar, you saw the prices on the slide. You know what we're looking at. That's going to be a PPA. And, and that, that's why I kind of took this question instead of giving it to Rakesh. Because what we're seeing in the market right now, the ownership model doesn't make any sense right now. The IRS rules just don't work for, for public power entities like us. The power purchase agreements is what has worked and what we've made work. And all of the, all of the wind and solar that Stacy put up on her slide, those are all deals that we've negotiated and we know how to do. Those come through, mostly through the energy side of the equation, which is, which is the usage charge as opposed to the demand charge. Okay? Your demand charge is essentially going to go away except for a small piece of the capacity that's in each one of those power supply contracts. And the capacity piece is a smaller piece. So you are going to see probably your energy charges stay flat or go up a little. But your demand charges are going to go down and the transmission charges are going to go up. I can't stop that.
Okay. Well, maybe.
I'm, I'm going, they'll, they can correct me. We're going to, we're going to own that, the house is going to be owned in 2035. So you now, you're going to have to pay to upkeep the house or whatever part of it is not mandated to be closed. All other costs, none of us can probably predict with a lot of comfort, yes, transmission costs are going to go up. So what my take when I heard that slide is that all other things staying the same. You take the mortgage out of the equation. You own the asset, you're going, you're going to see the drop. So to your point, are we going to see a 25% drop? I probably would agree with the way you're saying, no. But that 25% drop is going to offset probably transmission costs that are coming down the road.
I guess what I would say is that I would be cautious in going out to the public and saying that your cost of power is going to be 25% lower in 10 years than it is today.
Yeah.
You know, so we'll, we'll clarify that over time, I'm sure. As I kind of go through here, da, da, da. So I'm, as you went through the presentation and you laid out sort of what the, the mix of generation is today. Large and small scale solar, wind projects, coal, hydropower, blah, blah, blah. And then I think Stacy, you made the comment that we don't know what it's going to look like in 25 years. But is there, is there a hypothesis on that? You know, that you're going to be 25% solar, you're going to be 15% wind, you're going to be nuclear, you're going to be whatever you're going to be. Is there a way to get our arms around how we get to zero carbon from where we are today? Because, and just to dovetail on that, the pretty slide, the picture of the winding thing. There's a lot of retirement in there. There's a lot of generation taken out. There's not a lot of generation put in. Where is this going? How do we explain to people that IMEA is here today? Obviously the coal is moving away. But what is this going to look like in 25 years?
So part of the reason why you don't see a lot of additions in there is as we continue to go through our portfolio, you answered, as our load evolves, this is a living document that we wanted to, what we know today. And you answered, that's going to be updated every three years with, with the guidance of our board. But that being said, a lot of these really need, are determined by the RTO requirements. For example, if some of the rules that the RTO is on the capacity side, they don't give enough credit for solar and wind. So maybe batteries makes a lot of sense at that point of time. So it, it, it really, as the industry is evolving, so are the rules of the RTOs evolving. So we really need to, as we look towards those retirement dates, we try to see what is the most compatible replacement for those assets, so.
But you know, kind of to Trustee Apitoff's question.
Sure.
You know what your generation capacity is today.
Yes.
And you know that 50% of that has to be replaced because of coal or what have you. Is there, I mean, you're looking at the solar markets and the wind markets. Hasn't there been put down in pencil sort of where you think this is going to fall out?
And Bob, not just that, it's going to be compounded with the massive use.
The demand may go up. The demand, I agree, you may need more generation. But what's, there's a little have some faith here.
Sure.
And the 32, or however many sign up, we'll have to have the faith that you're going to be able to replace what is being retired. And I don't have a sense, and maybe you're just saying you can't have a sense to what's, how it's going to be replaced.
I'll be honest, it's, it's a very challenging situation. So you have state regulations there taking fossil fuel generation out of play, potentially federal. A desire by everyone to use more renewables, but the renewables are not always there. We all, I think not all, a lot of us believe battery storage will materialize to a utility grade component that's economical. It's not there. So when we put this together, we wrestled with a lot of moving pieces, which is why we added the requirement that they have to come back. So you were asking them to plan into the future at a time when some resources have to be closed. But the technology to do, say, 100% renewable portfolio is not there at the present. We think it will get there and that's why it's like, start looking at battery technology. It's likely coming. The other piece is basically they, they got to, these projects take years to materialize. Now, you know, permitting, getting it through the RTO. So fundamentally beyond replacing the contracts, they need to know who's at the table. So like when they're going out to get these projects, who's at the table? Who's going to be a member after 2035? So they know what's the size of the breadbasket that they're planning for. And then recently, and they talk, they're hitting on it, and I'm going to try to say it a little differently. So a power plant can be dispatched and so you can count on getting that power when you call. So they call us, they know they want 20 megawatts, they're going to get 20 megawatts from Winneka Power Plant. The RTOs that run the transmission system look, using, Rakesh will correct me, but usually like they'll say, if it's a 90 megawatt solar farm, they're only going to get credit for 30 megawatts. So to, if we really need 90 megawatts in the current marketplace, they have to buy 270 megawatts to meet the requirements of the RTO. So they're like forced into overbuying into a project or to generation that they wouldn't be able to use in other periods of the time. So it's a very challenging landscape that they're directing. The takeaway that I, I've gotten from being on the board is this 32 people, three of which are here tonight, have come up, will continue in my mind to come up with a solution. Pitch it just like I pitched to you, a problem and a solution. And then you provide direction, ask questions and maybe it gets reshaped, maybe it goes through. It's, it's always interesting for me is after pitching to you, I get to go and sit at the dais down there and they pitch to me. And so, so some, so it's been a balancing kind of position. But that's what you're counting on them to do. And the membership does that through policy direction. There's some unknown.
Yes.
But the reality is, is like there, the state has said there's a closure to fossil fuel generation. There, there, the agency wants to move to net zero. Battery storage is not there yet. So you're going to, that's like, we're counting on it coming, it being developed. There's already been, we're talking about AI now and what, three years ago was not general speak. So there's going to be, we recognize likely to be rapid changes in the development of the electric utility industry.
Well, okay. And I'm sorry to.
And the bulk of the resources that we are talking about really is 2045, 2050 timeline we are talking about. So that's.
So we would be going into a contract, just.
Yeah.
It's the way it is. We're going into a contract with a lot of unknown on how it's going to progress over the next three decades.
Well, yeah, and Stacy mentioned.
And that's just the way it is.
Well, and as Stacy mentioned to me is that, to be honest, that's how we started this agency.
Okay.
We had a lot of uncertainty. There's 32 people that came together at a common scale to come up with a solution.
You know, it's worth noting that that's, Rakesh's 20, that's his job every single day. He is continually meeting with different developers, not just on solar and wind, but on all the new technologies out there, trying to determine what is feasible, what's not feasible and what makes sense. And so that's really his primary function. And so as he just talked about, and that's sort of why he gave that part, he's in a, at a difficult spot right now because depending on how many people are with us after 2035, we may or may not need to purchase a lot more things to replace things as they retire, right? So you kind of need to know, it's a chicken and egg scenario. We need to know that piece in order to move forward. But at the same time, we seek your guidance in every step of the way. And it's all done, you know, through, we're, we're, you know, government. So we do it in an open manner.
Guys, one last question on the MDR portion of this. Is that completely separate from our current generation down at the plant? So this would be 10%. If we want to go out into far western Illinois and set up our own solar plant, we could look at the economics of that. And Brian, what is 10, today, 10% of the cost?
3.7, 3.7 megawatts is what we, so our peak is normally, they, with the formula that's in the contract, we, we always bump up against 40 megawatts. I asked them to, to double check it, expecting we'd have some discussion. And it's 3.7 megawatts based on the last three years. And as a reference point, because I've always thought about, and we get inquiries from the public about putting solar at the landfill. And we don't have enough room to put 3.7 megawatts at the landfill in its current state. So closer to like 1.6 to 2.2.
But we could do it anywhere.
But we could go anywhere in the state of Illinois. Now, some of those, again, it's set up so that we would do that at our expense if we so elect to do it. And they're, they're going to pay us, Troy will correct me if I got this wrong, the locational marginal price, a node price for the energy and capacity that goes from that project located somewhere in Illinois.
And that would be a decision that we would make, not we, but someone down the road would make based on. would make, based on it's a for-profit project for the village of Oneeka, or we want to do our part in generating clean energy for the world, whatever.
Exactly. So and the beauty of this is, you've got the agency that's got 32 people that agreed to a plan, that's net zero 2050. Other communities may say, we want to do more at a quicker pace. So now you have up to 10%.
To reduce their expenses.
To do, if they want to do, that's more, I would say, they're looking at is they want to have a portfolio that has more renewable resources in it, and may not come at a cost reduction, depending on what arrangement you go into. That's, that's, again, that's what they're trying to do for the agency at a large spread. The challenge is going to be is, is, you know, if there's a future opportunity that makes economic sense, which should be decided by this group or your successors, and they wanted to do that. I, to me, stormwater is over, things literally settle, stormwater settles, dirt settles. There's like two megawatts that could be easily hooked up, it's on top of a closed landfill, it's going to be facing to our neighbors to the south. There's an opportunity before we go looking for cornfields in western Illinois.
Okay, my last question. Are any of the 32 members, have any, have any of the 32 members at this point declined to extend the contract?
No.
Okay, so you have 14 that are on the table or signed up.
Right.
And, and the rest of us are looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
But no one has said, we're out, we're going in a different direction.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay.
We actually still have several meeting, more presentations lined up as we're going through the towns at their request, so.
It was a great presentation, I thought, so I'm done.
Others?
Yeah, thank you, Bob, you asked many of my questions. Along the line of the last question, it says here that two wind farms and one large solar farm need to be replaced before the member contract ends. I, I read that to mean that those members are not renewing their contract, but you're saying no, what is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, so when you enter into resource contracts, they expire. So if you look at the, let me take you back to the, this, the little snake, we call it the snake diagram for shorthand around. So what this is in the timeframe is when the wind contract expires. So we have a contract right now with the lead to Cal wind, it's actually with Nextera, and that expires in 2030. So we have to decide, are we going to, you know, extend into more wind, are we going to replace it with something else? We're going to look at our portfolio and determine, because you really have to match your load with your timing, and wind is generally at night, so do, you know, do you need more wind? Because maybe your load isn't really at night, it's in the day. So you look at all those details. So that, that contract falls off in 2030 and has to be replaced in some fashion. The same thing with Green River, that contract expires in 2035. And then the 25 megawatts that we entered into, because we were trying to get more solar, but we were in this awkwardly short timeframe, it had to end in 2035 as well. So that contract that we have with that vendor expires, and we have to decide, do we do solar longer in that one, do we do new solar somewhere else, that type of thing.
But when you're saying vendor, the vendor's not a member.
They're not a member, no.
Okay, that's.
So it's a, yeah, so it's, you're right, contracts, vendors, it all gets very complicated very quickly, so I apologize. So essentially, we're.
To me, I was thinking this was a member that was, who has a solar farm that was falling off.
No, no, uh-uh, no.
No, okay, so whether or not they, you find a new vendor, so then the 130-megawatt new solar energy, that's incremental, assuming you replaced the ones that are expiring in 2033?
Yeah, so the 130-megawatts of new solar is something we're looking to add in addition to what we're going to be replacing in the future. And this is because we had a contract that was with Vistra that expired, and we're, we're beginning to fill it with that solar resource now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And, and I can see how it does get confusing very quickly, so I apologize if we weren't, you know, clear on that. But we're entering into what's called a power purchase agreement, and that's really a way to, for lack of a better term, kind of a public-private partnership with an entity to where they get the tax credit and it flows through to a lower rate to us. And that's the reason that we enter in through that power purchase agreement.
I just have to pull together all the acronyms.
Yeah, I know, it's tough, and I, you know, I've only been in the industry about eight years, and I'll never forget how it is in the beginning, you know, like, too many letters. Thank you.
Really, we've talked a lot about the risk of the unknown, but there's not, switching to go with ComEd would also be with risk, right? Like, a lot of risk, I would think.
Well, I mean, it's not only risk, it comes, it's, you're basically losing, you're giving up direction on your utility system. Not like day-to-day operations, maintenance, undergrounding.
Right.
You're going to go to postage, there are rates that are done by ICC, you're going to pay for subsidizing nuclear plants, I'm waiting to see someone's. So all those things come when you're a ComEd customer, those are on my bill.
Right.
I was going to beat you to the punch.
It's okay.
So it just, I'm less, I'm less uneasy with the amount of risk that is involved with the unknown, because everybody has the same unknown. But I feel like with this, we at least know the knowns of there is a group talking about it.
I think the, I don't, I don't know if I consider the unknowns, but you think about it, if you're going to be in a room making difficult decisions and planning your power supply, you're in a room with 31 other municipalities, not a corporation or a shareholder, you're in there with 31 other members that are like in the same situation you are, that are answering to the public, they want to keep their lights on, they need to do it reliably and sustainably. So it's like, that to me is, you can, yeah, there's, what's the power generating source in 2050? As Trustee Dearborn said, yeah, that's some unknown. It's going to be a lot of probably battery storage systems and renewables, but you're going through it as 31 municipalities, as opposed to you're going to let Springfield decide it for you as a, as a ComEd customer.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, you've probably covered a lot of this in the presentation, but I'm going to have to hear it a couple times. So in terms of our power supply right now, IMEA has ownership in the two coal plants. Does IMEA own outright any of the wind and solar, or is it through a partnership agreement with another entity like DeKalb or Lee DeKalb and Green River that own it and we have a contract with them?
Yeah, most of those are in partnership arrangement, because it's really because we didn't have a way to take the tax credit, to get, to pass along the tax credit, because tax credits were historically only for for-profit. But moving forward, there are opportunities with, especially with IRA, which allows municipal utilities and not-for-profit to take some ownership interest.
So as those coal facilities are retired, does our ownership, or does your ownership value go away? And then it just doesn't exist anymore? Or is there a residual value with those coal plants when they're no longer usable?
Yeah, there are opportunities, yes, for example, the interconnection rights associated with those plants become premium, that's how you can, yes, replace resources at those. In addition to that, we have a huge fleet of member resources that I think is a value to the agency on top of these, the projects that we talked here, so.
And that is such as the prospect of having your members like Oneeka, if we have the capacity to add solar within our community, where we could own that, or we could do it in partnership with a developer, or, right, there's any conceivable scenario where we own, we partner, we lease?
So you've got the, the new opportunity to do member director resource, but also there's 19 members that have generation at the current, us included. So that's also in their portfolio to call upon, like our diesels, and for short-term esteem.
Is, is our status of being a producer impact our future relationship with IMEA, such that if we aren't producing, can we still be a member?
Absolutely, so this is, that's a good question, and the same as the current contract, you're in control of how long you want to be a generator. That means the council can, as we've already, as you've already done with unit number four, at your discretion, you can retire it. Same with diesel units eight and nine. In the details of the contract, you can, if we want to put in, which we're planning, new generation in 2030, there's provisions that we can put in, again, similar-sized units, we can replace the 1979 units with 2030 units. If we're going to become, we're going to go from a community that uses 37 megawatts, and we're going to propose 150 megawatts, that's going to, that doesn't fit this contract, that's a whole separate negotiation with the agency.
Got it. If, as time goes on, if IMEA does not pursue the option of, let's say, owning, producing, whatever, you know, solar, wind, renewable-type plans, what's the impact on IMEA's ability to negotiate or to have a role within the process?
I'm not sure if I follow the question.
I might. Are they serving as, are you serving as a conduit, a consortium without ownership? So you're, you're in between the producers and the member entities, and maybe I'm often left field in how I'm thinking about it here.
If I may, let me try. I think I know what you're asking, and I suppose we could get to the point hypothetically where IMEA has to retire all of the coal plants, and so what's left on our books as far as an asset that we own? And do we have value if we don't own anything? Well, one of the things that we've been able to do, we've been able to negotiate, for example, Stacy mentioned that Vistra contract. That Vistra contract was a cost-based contract that we negotiated. We didn't own those resources, but we had control over the capacity, we were able to bid it into the PGM market or the MISO market when we first started, we were able to fluctuate, and we ended up having to pseudo-tie those things into PJM. We had control over the energy, we scheduled it on a daily basis, and we do the same thing with the Lee DeKalb contract, which, when it was entered into, it was a 20-year contract. We do the same thing with Green River, which, I don't remember, it was a shorter-term contract. And that Ranger Power Agreement, this 25-megawatts, if, if all the IMEA members sign back up, that one actually does extend another 10 years or 15. So we are negotiating, I apologize that I don't know all the facts, I've negotiated all of these deals over the last 30 years, and they run together in my head a little bit. But even without ownership, we go out and get the best deal we can, and if it makes more sense for us to make a deal with a guy who can use tax credits, and we're getting some of that juice coming through, we still have an ops center that utilizes those assets to hedge what you're required as an, as a load-serving entity to buy from PJM. And so that's the value of IMEA, whether we own the resources or whether we use our expertise to contract for the resources. I think that was your question.
And to be blunt, could IMEA find itself where you're a middleman or a broker and not necessarily in the driver's seat in?
With the 1,000 megawatts of load, we're going to have 10, 12, 20 contracts, we're not going to have one contract. And, and, and that broker thing that you mentioned, that's where IMEA was in 1986. For, for serving Rock Falls back then, which was in ComEd, we had a deal with ComEd, and basically, ComEd served them, but we had a little adder on there. With the Ameren legacy companies, Illinois Power, Central Illinois Public Service Company, and Central Illinois Light Company, we had pass-through contracts where we basically flowed the power straight from them to our members, and we had a little, a little administrative charge that we added in the middle. That's how it worked in 1986 before we did buy into the first resource. We've used that ownership and that experience to gain all this expertise, we added the other baseload generators when we added them. So what I'm telling you is, ownership would be great, ownership in a wind farm, when they were first building those wind farms, we didn't think they were going to make it 20 years. It didn't make a lot of sense to own them.
I'm going to go at it a different way, I know where you're going, I think, with this, and I guess, I'm looking, you have 32, 32 customers?
We have 32 members right now, yes.
Members?
Yes.
And how many, how much, how much power do you use in those 32?
The peak is roughly 1,000 megawatts and.
For all 32?
For all 32.
Is that power guaranteed from a stand, I, I, what I'm getting at is, if this power plant opens in Wisconsin, Microsoft, which is going to drain, drain everything, is there a regulation why, does it start going to the high bidder? Is my question. If they say, we're willing to pay three times the amount that Oneeka or that, or IMEA's customers are doing, because we need this power, does this happen? Is that possible, or is that regulated?
That cannot happen under the existing Federal Power Act and the existing RTO structure. The RTOs have an obligation to serve everybody. The obligation to serve everybody will drive everybody's costs up, and that's why the value of what we try to bring is to see the curveball before it comes, get out there and beat the bushes, and find a developer that's willing to build a project for us at a price that we like, and, and, and give us collateral in case their LLC, which everybody's using nowadays, wants to go bankrupt and not honor the contract. I mean, we work really hard to make sure that we get these things in place, that they're financially sound, that we can enforce them in court if we have to, so that we have a hedge against what you're worried about happening.
So, so back on that.
Electrons will flow from PJM to your door, or the whole grid's going to go down for everybody in the country, and then NERC's going to have a field day with a bunch of new regulations.
So without having to repeat what Trustee Apitov was asking earlier about the crystal ball, sort of looking in the future, if, knowing what we know today, and sort of putting your sort of crystal ball hat on.
Yeah.
Or whatever, right, where would IMEA like to say, do you want to be in a position where if, let's say, the landscape's changing, where you can take advantage of the incentives to create or build or develop and own your own facilities versus asking members like us or third-party developers to create those facilities? What, what's the ideal future setup for IMEA in terms of ownership and production?
I think, just like we've got now, a mix of all of the above would be ideal.
The, I'm going to jump in as a board member, so a previous meeting, we gave the CEO census to consider opportunities to become a transmission owner, because you saw that line with the transmission costs out of control, and it's a rate of return that's mandated. So from a board perspective, again, pivoting to respond to what's going on, there was not a project that is ready to be delivered, but we said, from the board perspective, we're willing to entertain a discussion as a transmission system owner. So I think, you know, where do they go? Like, first thing that came to my mind, you were all thinking about generation, and I'm thinking, well, we just had a board discussion not too long ago, it said, looks to us like to mitigate costs, we're going to have to become a transmission owner.
Last question, Brian, a little bit of your crystal ball, or thinking through, if just as we are today, we can produce our own power, but we really don't generally serve the community, right? We pump it back into the system to serve all the members. But if, as time goes on, whether it's the existing plant, we replace it with other technologies, whether it be solar here, you know, across the state, but we have an ownership stake in the production or the generation, do we, does that give ourselves an insurance policy where if something goes wrong, that we, whatever, maintain that priority, make sure that our community is still served? So if there's a great outage, but we're producing power, can we somehow divert the lines where we're keeping the lights on here, but the neighboring communities might have the lights go off?
And this will like come back to bite me. I think we're in a position from where we're physically located on the transmission system that we have like low risk of having a transmission-related problem, so we don't have a radial transmission line that goes 25 miles to Central Illinois, and if that line comes down, there's no other way to get to us. There is some definite level of comfort when you're the water and electric director to know that if there's a, that event should happen, albeit, I think, a very low probability, that we can run the water plant, we can run the public works building, we can run the stormwater pumping station, we can have the police station has lights, because we have local power. And we can, along the way, pick up some business load or customers. We can't, again, on a peak summer day, you'll know, we couldn't meet our peak before, and now with the retirement of four, it's even less. But there's still inherently, yes, some comfort in knowing that, okay, if something does happen, we're positioned well. And that's why some of these members, they're in a position where they have a higher probability of that one line coming into town going down, so even though they've been well-served by the agency, that community said, something's. the agency, that community said, "Something's likely going to happen, and we're going to have to run generation." Was it Princeton? Princeton was multiple days? Five days, I think? Go ahead.
It was five days, so 138 radial, had multiple poles down.
So, to relate it, we're on a 138 KV system, we're on a transmission corridor, again, things could happen, they could do switching. Princeton, there's 138 KV line that goes to Princeton. When something happens, again, higher risk than what could still happen here, there's no way to switch to pick it up when the transmission's lined down. So they're running diesel generators for, like, five days to keep the lights on.
And that Princeton situation is, is the joint ownership opportunity that we're talking about with Ameren, to possibly solve that problem.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to give our guests here tonight a chance to weigh in if they would like, so would anybody like to share your thoughts or perspectives on this, with us? There's only four of you back there, so.
Hi, Craig. I live at 654 Ash. The thing that struck me most about this presentation was the ability it would give Winnetka to create its own energy, if it saw fit to do so. And I would just like to remind people, we're on the edge of a big wavy lake, as well as having a landfill that's pretty high and windy. So, it's a long way from having an idea to making it work, but I think Winnetka's in a position, potentially, to take advantage of some unique advantages. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Tom, Patrick, anybody?
Patrick. Hello, everybody. Patrick Hanley, Chair of the Environmental and Forestry Commission, I live at 589 Lincoln. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and thanks, Brian, for the outstanding work you've done on behalf of the village at IMEA. Three questions for you, and I apologize if you've covered this already, I came in a little bit late. First, the US EPA has come out with new rules that may impact on Prairie State. How do you think about that? Is that going to happen? What, what will the impact be on IMEA operations? Second, during this re-up process, will all 32 members be required to sign the same contract? Or will you negotiate different contracts for different members? I know Naperville has had a back-and-forth with IMEA ongoing, so I'm just curious about how you think about that. And then, third, I know that you're asking us to sign to a contract by May 25. Is that the timeline that we should be thinking about making this decision? Do we have a year to make the decision, or what are you asking village council to consider? Thanks.
Good questions.
I'll take, I'll take the first question. With regards to the EPA regulation that just came out, there were four regulations that came out. The one that really could have an impact on us is the power sector carbon rule, and that would be on Prairie State and Trumbull County. So that is something that we're reviewing, and we're taking a look at. It is already clear it's going to the courts. The federal EPA has tried to pass similar regulations in the past, and, and they've not succeeded through the courts. So that's sort of an unknown at this time. At the same time, this rule not only impacts Prairie State and Trumbull County, it impacts all coal facilities, as well as all new natural gas facilities. And then there, the EPA is also currently drafting a rule right now that's going to impact natural gas that's existing at this time. So really, the entire industry is going to have to be reviewing the EPA rules and figuring out our pathways forward on it. And the answer to that is, we'll do it exactly the same that we've dealt with regulations in the past, much that we've just talked about tonight, where we're going to review it. We'll look at the different options, what might be available to us to be able to meet those rules, whether it be co-firing through natural gas, or, you know, what, what those things might be. They talk about carbon capture, that's not really a road we've pursued at this time, but we, what we've, we've reviewed and studied, but not moving forward on at this time, but we will review every single option that's available, figure out what the economics of each of those things would be, and present those to the board, and then seek their guidance as to how we meet those regulations going forward. And the entire industry is going to be confronting those same questions.
If I remember, the second question, it's, is everybody going to get the same contract? The answer's yes. We took the exact same contract, we tailored it with the, you know, the different names, and for the capacity purchase agreement, there's a Table A at the back that lists the individual generators. So obviously, Winnetka has different generators than Marshall, you have different delivery points, so the technical specs are different, the, the core concepts, and the language is identical. And then the third question, I think.
Consideration period. The consideration period, it goes through May.
Let me, if I may, I just tried to start that. We are, in fact, talking to developers and, and vendors today about that 100-megawatts of solar. It might be vendor A for 50, and vendor B for 50. It might be vendor C for 100. Beyond those conversations that we're having, we can't start making decisions to, to buy into PPAs for more renewables until we know everybody's signed up. So we had to put a deadline out there. We gave everybody a full fiscal year after we sent it out, a year and, our fiscal year starts in May, we sent it out March 1st, so a year and two months. We think that's a reasonable time for people to have time to do their due diligence. We're going to work on those projects that we're working on now, and, and hopefully get something signed up as soon as possible. And then, once we know who's in and who's not, then we can decide what's the next contract we go negotiate. So I, I think that's the reason for the deadline, if, if that was your question.
The next resource contract.
The next re, I apologize, the next resource contract, yes, not the next member contract.
Would anybody else like to speak? Hi, John.
Yes, John Root. I have a question. If you're trying to get to net zero by 2050, when are you going to have to shut down your power plants here in Winnetka? Or, or are they scheduled to be shut down?
They are not going to last to 2050.
Okay.
So, at least not in their current state.
Nick would be masterful if he can keep it running that long.
Well, and under current state law, even under the Climate Equal Jobs Act that passed, anything 25-megawatts and below was, was excluded for purposes of.
So, again, coming back to, again, for a local not to step on Stacy. We're going, we're going to have to plan for replacing the backup generation for the water plant, whether that becomes used by IMEA, or literally is just parked there for when we need it in an emergency. We're, without elevated storage, we have to have backup generation for a water treatment plant.
Right.
So in my mind, some type of generation always exists to support the water plant.
And that's why they excluded the 25-megawatts and below, it's generally viewed as, as emergency generation-type scenario.
All right, did anybody, anybody else have any questions, or? No? Lot to ponder here.
Do you decide to move the timelines to what you want to decide?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, hopefully, more thoughts and questions will bubble up in the next month or so, and, you know, we'll get it on the agenda when it feels like it's right to talk about again.
Okay.
We don't have to rush it, and we shouldn't rush it. I mean, we should be diligent on this, just like we are with a lot of stuff that we work on up here, so. But the first step is always the important one, which is getting educated on what the heck we're getting, getting involved with there, so.
Well, this was excellent, thank you. I came in with several questions, and you answered them.
Okay. While we stand ready to answer any more, so please let us know. Thank you.
Awesome, well, thank you. Okay, we'll move on with our business then. Item four tonight, am I on? Item four tonight is closed session. I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing closed-session minutes pursuant to Section 2C21 of the Opens Meetings Act. Under the motion, when we adjourn the closed session, this meeting will automatically and immediately adjourn without the conduct of any further business or comments. May I have that motion? Roll call, vote?
Trustee, trustee Alvinson?
Yes.
Trustee Apotov?
Yes.
Trustee Horsec?
Yes.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Dahlman?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you again, that was a great presentation.
Thank you, good job.